Pause meeting, Upstate County Commission to order. We'll have a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to visit the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, imbecile with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
Good afternoon. Good morning, Jackie.
The County Commission of Upstate County West Virginia held their regular meeting at the Courthouse Annex on Thursday, April 28, 2016, at 9:00 a.m. Terry Cutwright called the meeting to order, President of the Terry Cutwright Commissioner, J.C. Rafferty Commissioner, Torrey Brady Commissioner, Terry Wallace County Administrator, Tavitha Perry Assistant County Administrator, Jacqueline Dinkblogger Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, all motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Torrey Brady, the Commission approved the special meeting minutes of April 19, 2016 as submitted. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Torrey Brady, the Commission approved regular meeting minutes of April 21, 2016 with the following addition and hypothetical corrections, page 3, paragraph 1. J.C. Rafferty advised that Mr. Granduski, Almore resident, expressed appreciation to Upstate and Randolph Counties for their efforts and that he intends to continue his efforts to resolve the issues at the state level. And in the final paragraph, would no further business on motion by Torrey Brady, seconded by Terry Cutwright, commission meeting adjourned at 2:30 p.m. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Torrey Brady, the Commission approved and authorized the precedent to sign the National Sharp Contract Purchase Order with valued business systems in the amount of $4,949. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Torrey Brady, the Commission approved the request from Jennifer Bennett, Splashers Swim Board President, to utilize the Bacchanal Upstate Recreational Facility Pool during the 2016 season for swim training. The Splashers Swim Club will use the pool Monday through Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 11:45 a.m. from May 31 through July 21, 2016, as in previous years, the $300 fee is waived. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Torrey Brady, the Commission approved the advertisement slash job posting for full-time position of Lewis Upstate Community Corrections Case Manager for the Lewis County Office. Applications must be received by 2:00 p.m. on Friday, May 6, 2016. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Torrey Brady, the Commission approved an amendment to the employment terms of Stephen Blake. Mr. Blake will begin work on or around May 2, 2016, prepping for the opening of the pool and pavilions at the rate of $10 per hour, and then on or around May 16, 2016, he will begin his employment as full-time DU rec. park pool manager at the weekly salary of $525. Terry Cutwright reviewed the following for your information items. Number one, Upstate County mile reports, March 2016, as listed. Two, agendas and our notice of meetings, as listed. Three, meeting minutes, as listed. Four, meetings, as listed. Derek Kimball, Upstate County Resident, informed about the evening and nighttime closing of the restrooms located at the alley side of the Courthouse Annex building and commented that it was a stipulation on the annex was built that the restrooms remain open 24/7. Terry Cutwright advised that due to ongoing vandalism that had occurred over a period of time, after consulting with legal counsel, the Commission had made a decision to close the restrooms after regular courthouse operational hours. However, the restrooms will be open during the Strawberry Festival. Upon inquiry about whether the closure will remain indefinitely, J.C. Rafferty advised that no decision has been made and will be reassessed at a later time. The Commission discussed the W.Y.K. Associates Incorporated scope of work and P.E. schedule for architectural slash engineering services for the Upstate County Public Library Roof Replacement Project. Terry Wallace advised that first day code requirements under $215,000 threshold, the Commission can move forward on the project without going through the bidding process. After discussion on motion by Torrey Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the W.Y.K. Associates Architectural slash Engineering fee in the amount of $13,250 and to move forward with the project. The Commission approved all invoices to pay them. The Commission approved all vacation orders. The Commission approved the following settlements, as listed. The Commission approved the following sonoration and/or refunds, as listed. With no further business on motion by Torrey Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission meeting adjourned at 12:00 p.m.
In the first of the one, two, three, third paragraph?
Yes.
You have adjourned at 2:30.
That was a correction from last week's minutes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Good job. You've heard the reading in minutes of our last state communication, any additions or corrections? I have none. No, I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded, all in favor, signature by the saying aye.
Aye.
I have so. We have a 9:30 meeting this morning with Kerry Smith, Region 7, public hearing approval on signature of the 2016 Small Cities Block Grant application for Elkins Road PSD Phase 3 Waterline Extension. At 9:45 a.m., Seth Cawback Deputy, we have a presentation of a certificate of recognition award. At 10:30, 10:00 a.m., Steve Linger, Director of E-91 Comm Center, request for employment schedule change that may lead to executive session. 10:30, Steve Linger, Director of E-91 Comm Center, discussion regarding the E-91 Supervisor Disciplinary Action. At 10:45, review and announcement of James W. Curry Scholarship recipients. There are a few minutes, we'll go on with those for discussion, action, or approval. One, approval and signature of agreement between the Division of Culture and History for the forehand on behalf of the Records Management and Preservation Board and the Upstate County Commission. The West Virginia Division of Culture and History agrees to grant the sum of $10,000 for the circuit person digitizing of transferred files. The term of the project shall be for fiscal year July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded, all in favor, signature by the saying aye.
Aye.
I have so. Two, review and signature of letter to George Lance, case number 09101501, regarding a complaint filed with the Upstate County Safe Structures and Sites Board. Do we need approval for that signature? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded, all in favor, signature by the saying aye.
Aye.
I have so. Three, review and signature of letter from Charlie McKinney, Assistant Fire Inspector, Chief Inspector's Division of the West Virginia State Auditorial's Office, confirming the services provided to the Upstate County Commission for fiscal year ending June 30, 2015. The fee for the audit services will be $28,240. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, but that is a change of statement. I have an aye. Let's see. All right, so.
Second. Been moved and seconded, all in favor, signature by the saying aye.
Aye.
Four, review and signature of correspondence from Senator Shelley Moore Capito requesting future review of the proposal by the Department of Labor that substantially revised the overtime regulations to county government. This is where they're wanting to raise the ceiling of salaries employed at $50,000?
$50,440. It's currently $23,660.
And Shelley Moore and Joe Manchin are opposing.
Well, we're writing them a letter asking for their opposition.
Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Also, been moved and seconded, all in favor, signature by the saying aye.
Aye.
Five, review and signature of correspondence to Senator Joe Manchin requesting further review of the proposal by the Department of Labor that substantially revised the overtime regulations to county government. This is the same letter. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded, all in favor, signature by the saying aye. Six, review and signature of correspondence to Terry Monclet with Expert Benefits Solutions requesting the removal of the teledoc service from Upstate County's health insurance plan effective May 1, 2016.
I'll provide a little bit to me for my doing. Our recent broker reviewed our insurance coverage that we currently have, and since 2011, the service has been on our plan, however, we've never had one employee call and utilize the service. It offers an employee a telephone number to call and speak with a doctor, most likely in another state. What I found with our employees is normally they would just call their own local physician and ask a question if they were to have one. If you remove this service, it will credit the commission an average of $4,700 a year.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded, all in favor, signature by the saying aye.
Aye.
I have so. Seven, correspondence from Maria Bray, President of the Upstate Arts Alliance requesting permission to display local students' artwork in the courthouse foyer. Before approval, the displays will be changed every three to four months. Did we do something like that last year?
No. The only recommendation I would have if we'd like to honor their request is it requires some kind of a bulletin board or something to be between the artwork and the wall so it doesn't damage the wall.
And I would be concerned on how much, I don't want the place cluttered either, you know what I mean? So they need to put it where it doesn't stop the flow of traffic or put it up on the wall top of the walls. I have a problem with that, as long as they do it, it doesn't damage the walls.
Well, we have some public statements over there inside the foyer as well, so it shouldn't be obstructed from the public viewing. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay. Been moved and seconded, all in favor, signature by the saying aye.
Aye.
I have so. Correspondence from Kerry Wallace, County Administrator and Advisory Board Member of the James W. Curry Advisory Board requesting the donation of 10 one-day pool passes to be used as incentives for local children to attend the 2016 summer reading program. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, signature by the saying aye.
Aye.
I have so. Number nine, request from Upstate County Clerk Debbie Thacker, Will Pomp, Sheriff of Upstate County, to serve as administrator for the will annex of the estate of Climber Ornsuter Sr., deceased, in accordance with Chapter 44, Article 1, Section 1 of the West Virginia Code. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded, all in favor, signature by the saying aye.
Aye.
Ten, correspondence from Amy Knight, Community Corrections Case Manager, announcing her resignation effective May 13, 2016. Do we want to go to Land Attorney Executive Station?
He'd like to, but he only needed to discuss.
I don't think we have anything to discuss.
Routine resignation. Okay. All in favor, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded, all in favor, signature by the saying aye.
Aye.
I have so. Number 11, correspondence from Tavitha Perry, Assistant County Administrator on behalf of the Upstate County Youth Camp Board requesting the employment of Zachary J. Haddix as a seasonal part-time groundskeeper at the wage rate of $9 per hour effective immediately. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded, all in favor, signature by the saying aye.
Aye.
I have so. Well, not going to do that. Okay.
We'll put the right side.
For your information, certain items might require discussion, action, or approval by the Commission. Number one, correspondence from Tavitha Perry, Assistant County Administrator, to Dr. Sarah Stankis of Union Elementary School forwarding a letter received from Paul A. Matox Jr., P.E. Secretary of Transportation and Commissioner of Highways with the Division of Highways, informing the students that the traffic volume at the entrance is nine of thirty. Now, out of meetings, Kerry Smith, Region 7, public hearing approval and signature of 2016 Small Cities Block Grant application for the Elkins Road PSD Phase 3 Waterline Extension, Kerry. Welcome. Thanks for coming here.
Thanks for having me. I'm Kerry Smith, I'm representing Region 7 on behalf of the Upstate County Commission, or actually on behalf of Elkins Road PSD for submission of the Small Cities Block Grant application, which is actually sponsored by the Upstate County Commission. Small Cities Block Grant has a requirement to hold a public hearing, which was advertised in Record Delta in the April 29 edition. Basically, the public hearing allows for an opportunity for public comment on the proposed project. And the project that we are submitting an application for on behalf of Elkins Road is called the Elkins Road PSD Phase 3 Water System Improvement Project, which consists of extending water service to approximately 82 new customers from the Elkins Road PSD water distribution system. It includes upgrade to two existing water storage tanks, replacement of existing deteriorated water line, in addition of new water line to improve system hydraulics, addition of two booster stations, addition of emergency generators at four existing booster stations, and the construction of a new office building and new storage garage. The project will extend water service to the areas of Beach Run, Hawkins Road, Upper Children's Run, Wolf Ridge, and Fortney/Snyder Road, Jackson Road/Winer River, Keaton Road, Otter Road/Braddock Lane, Radival Ridge/Handy Camp Road, and Osborne Run Road in rural Upstate County. And keep in mind, some of the names that I'm mentioning, they may have altered per se because of the road name change, but for the sake of the application, we wanted to keep consistency with what we had previously submitted in previous years, so if any of the names sound unfamiliar, it may have a different road name now from the...
This is a project that's been ongoing for a number of years.
Correct, correct.
Hope to finally move along. Do you have to tell them how many homes or customers?
It's approximately 82 new customers. There's a few existing customers on the project, but it's eliminating long service lines on those, but they're not considered new customers. The Small Cities Block Grant application deadline is May 23, which we are actively working for that, to complete that application prior to the deadline date. The maximum award amount available for this project is a million and a half grant. Now, keep in mind, that is just for the grant portion of it, we are requesting additional funds through the West Virginia Infrastructure Jobs and Development Council for additional funds for $5 million to cover the remainder of the project.
This is a grant and pool of money that other agencies are also requesting.
Others, sponsors are requesting these same grant lines. The program is very competitive, and for fiscal year 2015, they had 54 applications submitted to the county office totaling $68 million in requests. So ours is a million and a half, and, you know, everyone else can ask up to a million and a half as well, but there was requests, 54 applications requesting $68 million.
Have you calculated what each fee would be for tapping into, for these residences, what each cost per tap into the...
They evaluate the cost per customer for these projects, and that's also taken into consideration of what the cost per customer is, or how much money it would be.
They want to get as many, typically they'll review the request and they'll ask as many homes to be serviced as can be under the grant.
They want to be cost-effective.
Right.
The, like I alluded to earlier, the project cost is a million and a half Small Cities Block Grant and $5 million West Virginia Infrastructure Jobs and Development Council loan at 2% 30 years. The, basically, as I said, there's a lot of people across the state that are, that we're in competition with for these, buying for these grant monies, which are becoming less and less available. So this program is very competitive, and basically, any support that we can have for the project, that we can include in the application, you know, people's stories of what their hardships that they're dealing with with not having water, I mean, basically, anything that we can include in the application is only going to make your project more competitive to being selected. Now, we submit the applications, you know, May 23 to the development office, the development office reviews the applications and makes recommendations, but keep in mind that the governor actually makes the final selection for, for the projects. So any input from, again, local community representatives for the project, you know, are most welcome, we include those in the meeting minutes and include that information in the air, those in the meeting minutes in the application, so. And Greg Belcher may have additional information to add regarding the project, he's the engineer for patent technical for the project.
Great. Thank you, Kerry.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your efforts on the Upstate service.
Again, if there's any audience members that would like to speak or say anything.
Thank you.
This is just a little two-page summary of the project, and a lot of this is just a summary of what Kerry's told you, that the overall project cost is $6.5 million, and yes, this has been a long process so far with this project, this is what we're calling Phase 3, extension project for the district. I think the first application for grant funding began in 2007, so we're almost going on a 10-year period here, and the funding is key, this small city grant is what's going to make the project go, so hopefully this year will be a little better than previous years. The second page, we were talking earlier about road names, was able to get the road names updated last night, and the sheets you got there explains, identifies the extension with the number of customers per each extension. Discussion here about cost per customer in the far-right column indicates that information. Just to back up a little bit, tell you how these extensions were arrived at, is exactly what the commissioner said earlier, is identify the areas within the district's boundary that did not have water, survey those counted houses, estimated construction costs, calculated these numbers, and then they prioritize them based on price cost. This is the third large expansion project for the district, and maybe even perhaps the last, unless something happens somewhere and there's some significant development. If you can look at these right-hand numbers, we're looking at over $40,000 a customer for an extension, and that's kind of indicative of how far out an accounting has a reach. The one number there is saying, it used to be Keaton Road, it's Burt Ridge Road, it's Burt Bridge Road now, I've removed that from the calculations for cost per customer because that, we are going to pick up a few homes on that extension, but it's really needed to solve some longstanding hydraulic problems that the district's had since inception, so it really wasn't fair to delegate that on a cost-percustomer basis, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. As far as rates go, the accountant is kind of an odd timing here to be dealing with small cities. Usually, these awards prior to the current administration was sometimes in the fall, like October, November. For some reason, our current administration just awarded grants back in March, so accountants are typically kind of busy in April. And then once April 15th here, they go try to live, they get caught up, but we don't have rates right now from the accountant, but we have a deadline of Tuesday to get all this information updated to the Infrastructure Council in order for, you know, the project to remain eligible. And Kerry's got the deadline of the 23th, the grant application, and so it's awful and click, 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 hopefully.
Well, also extending these water lines to residences, fire protection also is extended because of the hydrants and what...
It is, on all the, two extensions, we've got two extensions where we weren't able to, the cost per customer would be too high to put a booster and a tank in, the tanks needed for, for fire flow. We've got a couple of small constant run stations in, and in those locations, we won't have fire protection, but we'll have water.
The other, the other communities you were competing with, are they in the same situation they're getting to the end of their, they're out in rural areas, are weak competitive with their, their customer?
It's probably on an upper, upper-end level, but I think persistence really is one thing that typically pays off here, and the fact that the most recent grant for the county is being used now and dispersed, so hopefully that will leave us on the table longer than we have been. What, they have, Kerry, eight million or something like that statewide?
Uh, 12, 12 million.
12, yeah. We have 68 million in requests and they awarded 12, so they're looking for easy ways to deny the application because of having to tell so many people, so if you're a county that's got a grant called money, that may be even two or three years old, they're likely not going to get the action, or it could be a criteria that causes you to deny.
Yeah, typically every year, we're requesting a waiver, because currently, right now, you all have, and basically, an open Small Cities Block Grant application to the Adrian PSD project. So they typically do not award an additional Small Cities Block Grant application if you have a current project ongoing. That project is under construction and anticipated for it to be completed prior to the next award cycle, so that would behoove us, but still, again, even if you didn't have that, there's still no guarantee that you would be awarded the funds, but we have hopes that that would be the case, that they award it.
Second. You have moved the, uh, the signature. Been moved and seconded, all in favor, signature by the saying aye. I have so.
Would you like to say here, there may be some other residents here that would like to speak and they'd have a comment? Does anyone else want to speak on behalf of the project?
Yes, on the Radival Ridge Road, there is, in, just in a one little section of the Radival situation there, farm, the old farm since 1816, they've been 13 wells drilled to try to get good water, and only two wells have turned out to be in the count at all. They either go completely dry, or they've got so much sulfur in it that they can't use it.
We've also received written correspondence from property owners as well that we consider to have on record.
I'm on the Fortney Snyder ground, and I've lived there for 60-some years, and we never did have any good water. I went out and bought orange dishes, because all my white dishes are so orange. We spend an average of probably $200 a month to do laundry. We spend an average of probably two hundred dollars a month to do laundry. I buy all my drinking water, all my cooking water, I have to go to my boys, two miles away, and haul it in, of course, and our bathroom is the same as the white dishes. I mean, you can't clean nothing, and I've got acid, gas, sulfur, you name it, I've got it in my way, and it's no good for nothing. And the other two wells above me is the same thing. You could light it on fire if you wanted to, the wells. So the water out there, you can't use it, so there's nine, nine houses in there that don't have it.
We can recommend, as Carrie has indicated, Greg's indicated, this is competitive, so we, and we are not in a position to guarantee any, any result, but we certainly do support this effort. Have supported it now, I've been on the commission, I'm going on six years, and we've supported it since that time.
And collectively, every piece of, I'll say, support information that we receive, we include it in the application, and from year to year, I continue to include that same stuff and then add to it as I receive new additional information, just to show that it's not going away, it's still the same, if not worse, problems that, that you have. So I, I've just collected the information over the years and to continue to add to it in the application.
Can you include a copy of the recording from the meeting?
Yes, I can.
So if any of you would like to make verbal comments, we can include the CD in the grant application.
I, I have a question, and I'm, I'm, I live on Rate of All Ridge Road, but there won't be any of these places that need the water, they won't, any of those won't be eliminated, just to be able to get the water for the rest of the year.
They, they shouldn't be eliminating any areas now. I can't say with any definiti, like, where on the design plans of, you know, how far a line goes, as far as if, if the line gets just slightly shortened or extended based on construction costs, because we don't know what's going to come in as far as the construction costs, but, I mean, there's no plans of eliminating anyone from receiving water.
This is an extension of what's already there, the Rate of All Ridge Road, because it's brought up there quite a ways.
Yeah, these are all, I mean, it's an extension of service, because that's, I mean, it's extending to all these various areas, so. And last year, we also submitted, someone had given us like a solo cup that they left water in, basically, the inside of the cup was orange, and we actually sent that down with the application last year, because, you know, someone gave it documented, gave it to us to, as evidence of, you know, what, what they have at their home, so we sent that down. So, I mean, we, we've sent pictures down, I mean, I mean, that's why we ask for documentation, because we can't make a compelling argument for your project without the people providing their input of what they're dealing with on a daily basis.
They shouldn't have all of those out there, all for some...
Well, all the bit, all the information that I've received each year, I keep it, and I continue to submit that stuff along with any new information that we receive. So each, I, I know people are like, well, provided the same stuff last year, you know what, if you're providing it again this year, it's still showing that you have that interest in receiving water.
I guess the question I had, I didn't explain myself well, if you, if you're going to get so much money, and it's not enough money to do it all, how are you going to come to the decision who gets it and who doesn't?
I'm not on the board to make that decision. I mean, that would, I guess, would be ultimately in the hands of Elkins Road PSD and their board, so, I mean, that, again, that would all, I guess, be dependent on where construction costs come in, because, you know, the engineers provided to, an estimate of what they believe that those construction costs would be. We got funding, or attempting to get funding in place to pay for that construction, and then ultimately, it comes down to whatever funding is in place, and the project goes out to bid of what those costs are from all the bidding contractors on the project. You know, we have no way of knowing what, what that may be.
The other, the other thing I just tell you is that there, the funding agencies and the Districts are very sensitive to the scope of the project. They're not going to arbitrarily say, you don't get water, or you don't get water. There will have to be public hearings if they go over budget to talk about a change in scope, so you'll have, you won't, you won't get blindsided.
Well, our team's the same thing.
Okay.
Our intentions is not to eliminate any.
Right, everybody, we want everybody to have us.
Well, right, I understand.
Carrie, is he was, he lived on Snyder Run Road, my look, or that sheet, is that one of the roads that's been changed or...
Yes, it is.
Okay, so your roads won't be there, okay.
Yeah, I'll say, in years past, we, we kept all the road names the same because of what was submitted previously, because we didn't want anyone to think that, and even then, there were some road name changes, that that's why there's a slash, and all that, but it got to be very cumbersome, the application, as to where, where the areas were, so.
Thank you.
I think he's up for saying run now, just what, what road names are.
Anybody have anything else?
Well, I have a question. Now that we've got your all's support and backing, and we're moving into the next step, what can our potential customers do to maybe help us along in, in the next phase the project goes in? Do we need to send letters to Senators, the Governor's Office, anything like that?
Thank you, Carrie.
No, I mean, he, the Governor is the person who makes the ultimate selection, so that's why I said if you're getting any kind of involvement, support to your representatives, then, you know, it, it only helps your projects, it certainly can't...
Maybe it's the neighbors to do same thing.
I think it would be better if they would put the letters together, in my opinion, and send them all once, because, oh, here's a letter, and you look at it, and you kind of forget it, but if you get several of them at one time, you get more attention, in my opinion.
The key, the Governor himself is going to take recommendations from his staff. He is not going to be fully aware of every issue pending, and he would look for recommendations, so I, should it be sent to Police Service Commission, or who would...
I, I would suggest the Governor or his, his representative, or his, I'll say, local representative that he, he has, but, I mean, he, he in fact makes the ultimate decision, which is partially why the announcements were so late this year. We, in the past, they've been in November, and then December, and then January, the last couple of years, and in this past year, it was, it was not until March eighth, which has kind of put, I'll say, Region Seven a little bit behind, being that we didn't know which projects were going to be funded, and which ones we were going to have to reapply, and it doesn't give us very much of a window to prepare the applications, because there's more to the applications than just having things for the May twenty-third deadline. Some of the projects have to go back through Infrastructure Council to get approval, which Greg alluded to, and this is one of the ones that has to go back through because of policy changes at IJDC, so...
Not wanting to give the appearance of being self-serving for our people, possibly that narrow window will allow us to get something in at other counties, we'll be able to get...
That, that is a possibility, but keep in mind that the Development Office, or the CBPG program, they do make an emphasis on water and sewer projects, so, I mean, for the most part, projects that are being submitted are, are water and sewer projects, so...
The Governor's local representative, Phil, over at Elkins, did you have Glenn or any, Glenn, do you all have his address, if they could send, give them the...
Yes.
Send the letters, if they get them together? I, I think sending them to him, he would see that the Governor got them, or got them, they got them to the right place.
You get that, too.
Patty, could you also ask your customers to CC or copy Carrie Smith, the Region Seven on that letter, so they can include the letters in the grant application as well?
Uh, I, I have sent a letter that says, you know, like, send them to, to there, or send them to my office, and I will make sure that they, they get them, and I did bring her three letters today.
One would hope with the election this year, we're looking at an awards of maybe November, December, we would think, so timing, maybe look at it from that aspect, maybe a little sooner than later this time.
One can only hope.
Anybody have anything else they'd like to add? Okay, if not, we got a nine forty-five, I think, yes. Cut around nine forty-five, beginning now at ten o'clock. Seth, sir, do you have something you want to say?
No, I'm just here to watch the presentation.
Okay, our nine forty-five is for Seth, cut right, deputy, we want to give you, Seth, a certificate of recognition, and your award.
Thank you.
If you come forward, Seth. Let me read this to you, yourself, the Upsher County, Upsher County, West Virginia's Certificate of Recognition, presented to Seth Cutrague on this fifth day of May, two thousand sixteen, in recognition of your outstanding achievement while attending the one hundred and sixty-fifth West Virginia State Basic Officer Class at the West Virginia State Police Academy, signed by all three Commissioners, and this was for setting a time record on the mile and a half run, it was seven minutes and fifty-four seconds.
Fifty-seven.
Seven minutes and fifty-seven seconds, a record that stood for fifteen years.
Yes, sir.
That's going to be a tough one to break.
Anybody that breaks that, they deserve that, that stuff.
That, that pretty much puts you in a, under a four-minute mile on the first mile, isn't it?
I think I ran a five oh five for my first mile, and then my second two laps were around a minute thirty.
Is that many? That's pretty impressive.
What was the previous record?
Eight oh four.
And it stood for fifteen years.
So we should, by public, they shouldn't run for long, or something.
And I'm sure I was picked for the, I'm sure I was picked for the commission, I think the Sheriff's Department knows they have a runner. You ought to be nearby, that'll solve it.